Good evening and welcome to the April 27th meeting of the Murfreesboro City's School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us and we're glad to have those that are at home watching us on television. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as our Principal from Bradley Academy. Mr. Rashad Torres will lead us in our pledge. Followed then by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. All right, board members, you have seen a copy of the agenda already. Do I have an emotion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications, Ms. Trail.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to start by saying that next week, we're going to be celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week, so we hope to have lots of goodies for our teachers to enjoy. They've had a great year and we're very proud of the work they do every day. So join us next week, Teacher Appreciation Week. Also want to go ahead and announce that last week, our Read to Succeed Spelling Bee was held, and this is in conjunction with Rutherford County, Read to Succeed, and Murfreesboro City Schools. We had several applicants that actually made it to this countywide spelling bee. From Black Fox was Noah Daniel Johnson, from Kason Lane Benjamin Pearson, from Discovery Caitlin Vincent, from Northfield Daniel Tawu, from Overall Creek Julius Malden, from Salem was Layla Galini, sorry, and Mr. Duke told me how to say it before we started, so it was in my head, from Scales Carter Smythe, and from Irma Segal Anna Anderson. And they competed not only with Murfreesboro City Schools, but with Rutherford County Schools and the private schools. And the winner for our county was from Overall Creek, Mr. Julius Malden. So congratulations to him. And I know several of you are watching that spelling bee as it happened. Also, congratulations to Kimberly Hicks. She is a Scales teacher. She was chosen as the Channel 2's Educator of the Week. She was highlighted on that channel this past week. Ms. Hicks has a positive and contagious attitude, student engagement, and she makes learning fun and meaningful, which is what we want all of our teachers to do. Also, congratulations to Forrest Norton and Alex Georgiev of Overall Creek Elementary. They actually won the TSIN statewide design challenge. Their winning entry was Greenleaf Bioplastics, which is really, really cool that they're winning on a state level. So that is your communications. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Marlin for your spotlight on education.
Thank you, ma'am, very much.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Recently, we announced that all 13 of our MCS schools have been recognized by the Tennessee Behavior Support Project at Vanderbilt for their exemplary implementation of the response to instruction and intervention for behavior. And you all hear about that all the time. We talk about RTI 2B. The purpose of this recognition is to highlight and promote schools who successfully implement RTI 2B so that their practices can serve as models across the state. So all 13 of our schools have been recognized and now can be models for other school districts, other schools across the state who want to adopt this practice. Tonight, I'd like to share a brief video from Becky Haynes. Becky's our educational consultant from TBSP. She recognizes our schools for a job well done, and she'll spend a little time explaining the reason for this honor, the reason this honor's been given. She wanted to be here tonight, her employers. Vanderbilt won't let them do that yet, in-person visits. We've been doing all of our visits with her online this year. So she made this video for us to share with you. After the video, I'll ask Dr. Caitlin Bullard, the principal at Kason Lane, to come and talk a little bit about some of her reflections on this process and the accomplishment that her school has been able to achieve so far in this project. Let me start this video.
Good afternoon. My name is Becky Haynes, and I am honored to represent the Tennessee Behavior Supports Project, or TBSP, at Vanderbilt University today in celebrating the accomplishments of our Murfreesboro City Schools. It is my privilege to announce that every school in the Murfreesboro City School District has been selected as a 2020-2021 School of Recognition or Model of Demonstration School. The RTI squared B Model of Demonstration School process was constructed to acknowledge schools for exemplary implementation of response to instruction and intervention for behavior. There are over 1,800 schools across the state of Tennessee, and each year, a small percentage of schools meet the criteria to be selected as an RTI squared B Model of Demonstration School. The purpose of this recognition is to highlight and promote schools successfully implementing RTI squared B so their practices can serve as models across the state. Model of Demonstration School sites serve a variety of roles, as their work may be used as examples in local trainings and technical assistance, or they may be asked to host visitors who are looking to engage in or enhance their implementation practices. Just as a foundational practice within RTI squared B is to acknowledge students and staff for their hard work and pro-social behavior, it is the responsibility of the state and the districts to acknowledge schools for their effort toward improving school culture and climate. Implementing a multi-tiered system of support is not an easy endeavor. It takes time, consistency, and dedication to make strides in changing how a school functions and supports its students. Hence, the importance of recognizing both effort and achievement with the Model of Demonstration Recognition process. And now, let's recognize each of the schools in our district for their hard work. We have Mitchell Nielsen that has been selected as a School of Recognition. They are well on their way to serving as a mentor to other schools in the state. Salem Elementary was selected as a Bronze Level Model of Demonstration School. The Bronze Level Recognition indicates a school is excelling in the implementation of Tier 1 and can serve as a Tier 1 model and mentor for other schools in the state. Black Fox Elementary, Bradley Academy, Irma Segal Elementary, and Hobgood Elementary were all selected as Silver Level Model of Demonstration Schools. The Silver Level Recognition indicates that a school is excelling with implementation of both Tiers 1 and 2 and can serve as a Tier 1 and 2 model and mentor for other schools in the state. And lastly, we have several schools who are selected as Gold Level Model of Demonstration Schools, the highest recognition level in the state of Tennessee. Our Gold Level Schools in Murfreesboro City include Kason Lane Academy, Discovery School, John Pitterd Elementary, Northfield Elementary, Overall Creek Elementary, Reeves Rogers Elementary, and Scales Elementary. These schools have all demonstrated high levels of implementation across all three tiers in their RTI squared B system. Our Gold Level Schools can serve as a model and mentor for other schools in the state in Tiers 1, 2, and 3. Please join me in congratulating all of our Murfreesboro City Schools for their continued effort and dedication to supporting the needs of all students. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.
So I'd like to suggest we give them all a round of applause. I know there's something I'm supposed to do here with this, and I'm going to do that. So there we go. All right. I'd like to ask Dr. Bullard to come up. Just so that you'll know, I'm going to present her tonight with this certificate. This comes from Vanderbilt and the project, but also, they've been given banners that go in their schools, and so this year, recognize them as Gold Level, and this also has for the 1819 year when they were Silver Level. And so I'd like for Dr. Bullard to take just a minute to help us understand about the process.
All right. Thank you, guys, and good evening.
Good evening.
It is such a privilege to work in a district where all 13 of our schools have been recognized for implementing such an evidence-based behavioral program. And Mr. Marlin asked me to speak tonight about my experience in a Gold Level Model of Demonstration School, so I'll share that with you. The heart of RTI 2B is the belief that we can make a positive impact as a school on relationships, social-emotional learning, and behavior. And we've certainly been able to do that through instruction and intervention. As Becky referred to in the video, you guys saw what differentiates a Gold Level Model of Demonstration School from the other levels is the work we do with our Tier 3 students. So those Tier 3 students are the students who have the highest needs in behavior, who are the most prone to crisis, and often who have backgrounds from trauma. What we've done here in MCS with the focus on the whole child and on social-emotional learning has truly supported the work that we've done in the schools with RTI 2B. We've been able to provide wraparound supports, and we've been able to implement those things due to, in large part, the amazing staff that we have and those wraparound services such as counselors, ACES, STARS, Centerstone, our social workers, those things that you guys know really set us apart. So in Kason Lane Academy, we believe there's two kinds of stories. There's success stories, and there's future success stories. So I'd like to share with you guys one of our success stories today. Last year, we received a first grader from another MCS school who came with a behavior plan, and this plan included targeted behaviors for physical aggression, elopement, and property destruction. Because they were coming from another MCS school where they had implemented some of these RTI 2B supports, we were able to put in those wraparound services from day one. It took a whole team. So from the very beginning, we were able to implement that plan and modify it as the students' needs changed. From his case manager who modeled strategies in the general education classroom, to the special education teachers who were only ever one text message away if things started to escalate, it was a true team effort. And I mean that. So the behavior interventionist was updating the plan continuously. The counselors were making sure that the parents were communicated with, as well as the entire support team. And even the admin team took the student on movement breaks, which sometimes turned into push-up contests, and he still claims that he won, but I will argue that to the day. So it really is everybody. This student also responded to what we call heavy work, and so he was responsible every day for going to the office to reload the copy machine, and he was moving that paper. So our office secretary was supervising his breaks. In our view, we are all responsible for student success, and we all take that shared ownership. And we believe in that shared ownership in teaching strategies in every area in the building and in celebrating successes together. Sometimes those successes come in huge wins, and most of the time, they come in the form of small victories. And we're going to take those small victories where we can find them, and we got one of those last week, so I'm going to tell you about that real quick. Last week, this student, same one that I was telling you about, became frustrated with a math assignment. And instead of leaving the classroom like he would have done last year, or instead of becoming physically aggressive, he, without prompting, took a break. And what was really extraordinary is, two minutes later, he went to that teacher's table, picked up the math test, and went to go finish it independently, without prompting. So like I said, we celebrate that where we can get it. Some days, it's hard to believe he's the same student, and other days, we do see glimpses of that prior behavior. But the difference is that now, he's armed with tools and strategies and two years of practice implementing those so that we're able to get him back on track. We build on those relationships that we formed with him over the past two years, and we're able to reset his day. And so despite the occasional tough day, with this student and with so many others in Tier 3, we've seen tremendous progress. We're always modifying our plans and changing things as students' needs evolve. But I have to say, from my experience, even in a model school, progress is not linear, but we know that over time, it pays off. Ultimately, we're constantly reminding ourselves that by showing perseverance and putting in the work now, we are writing those future success stories. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to share with you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Ms. Barton?
Just like to comment, I know how much work that takes. Been there, done that, and wow. Very impressed that all of our schools are qualified, and even more impressed, how many are Gold Levels. So thank you, because I know it takes a lot of organization and supervision and help from, like you said, every last person in the school.
Ms. Moore?
Also, just want to thank you, Dr. Bullard, for making that a little more concrete for those of us who don't live this every day. There's a lot of acronyms. So that was really helpful to see what you actually mean on the ground, what it looks like. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Our consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Action items. Board commedia assignments. You have seen these. We made these assignments some time ago, but we're just coming forth tonight with the board to make sure that we approve them and make that official. So do we have a motion to approve these commedia assignments?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you very much. Approval of Discovery School Track.
Yes, this is the resolution, Mr. Chairman. On April 8th, you guys are aware that the City Council approved the construction of the track and voted to donate $20,500 toward the project. The proposed resolution states that the Murfreesboro City School Board acknowledges that this donation would constitute a one-time appropriation from the City General Fund to MCS, this budget for fiscal year 2021. The transfer would not increase or otherwise affect the city's maintenance of effort obligation under state law, and we are recommending approval of the proposed resolution.
Have a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Family Resource Center Advisory Team.
Yes, sir. Murfreesboro City Schools Family Resource Center is currently operating in partnership with Greenhouse Ministries at the Spring Valley Apartment Complex. Funding for our Family Resource Center comes from a state grant in the amount of $29,611, with a local match of $20,388. As a grant recipient, MCS agrees to establish a Family Resource Center Advisory Council to identify and prioritize the needs for the Family Resource Center. We are recommending approval of the 2020-2021 Family Resource Center Advisory Council.
Have a motion to approve the Resource City Advisory Council?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any question? And I see, Ms. Moore, you are our representative, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of the audit.
Yes, sir. Board Policy 2.703 states that an audit of fiscal accounts shall be made by a certified public accountant following the end of each fiscal year. The certified public accountant shall be selected by the board. We are recommending that the board select the accounting firm Job Hastings to conduct the FY '21 audit for the Board of Education, general purpose funds, cafeteria funds, federal funds, and ESP funds, while Matlock Clements would continue to audit the internal school funds. And I'm going to ask Ms. Williams to come up and very briefly provide a little more information on this.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yes, there's been a considerable amount of discussion, but very briefly, we do feel that in the best interest of Murfreesboro City Schools, it would be best to change auditors to Job Hastings. The primary consideration is that Job Hastings is the auditor for Murfreesboro City. There are many benefits to aligning the city school's audit with the city. The primary reason is Murfreesboro City Schools has grown beyond just a smaller school district. And we combine that, the growth of the school district, along with the complexities of a comprehensive financial audit. Murfreesboro City Schools audit is combined with the city to create what's called a comprehensive annual financial report. So it's no longer just an audit of financial records. It's a comprehensive, complicated. So for the sake of efficiency and for timeliness and accuracy, I think the best move is to change to Job Hastings.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we follow the advice of our very capable finance director and the switch to Job Hastings, is that correct?
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any question or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Budget amendments and transfers.
Okay.
Yes, that's you again, Ms. Williams.
We have several budget amendments before you tonight for your consideration, and they have been provided to you. Are there any questions about any of these amendments?
We have a motion then to approve the amendments.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Reports and information. Enrollment.
Good evening again. You have before you the reports that in your paperwork. I'd like to share with you the PTR information. The pupil teacher ratio is the first page that we'll look at. You'll notice that the total in the far right-hand lower corner is 8,405. If you'll remember, this is just the groups of students that are enrolled in regular classrooms. So this doesn't account for all the other students. So this is not the total enrollment. That's just the total that come under this PTR calculation. But if you look at the lower part of the page, the yellow highlight, you'll see that our average PTR across the district is 19.02 per classroom, and you'll see the breakdown above that of kindergarten through third grade and fourth through sixth grade. Not much change there. That's about 15 more students than last time. And then, if you'll turn to the second page, which is the enrollment page, that's where we'll see the total enrollment for the district. Across that bottom of that page, in the green highlight, you'll see that we have, on the right-hand side of that, 9,011 students. That's up from 8,992 the last time we counted. And on the far right-hand side of that form, you'll see that our growth is still a negative 247. The last time, that had been 266. So you can see that that number has changed somewhat. If there are no questions about either of those?
Excuse me, Joe. Mr. Ballard?
I know recently, and we've been discussing in the budget discussions about the growth, and we had a number of 9,500. Is that not right, Dr. Duke?
Yeah, so that's what we're projecting for next year.
We had shrinkage this year, and I know with the COVID and all the activities there. But how are we anticipating such a rapid increase to 9,500?
So that's really going to be our incoming kindergarten class. So when we did those projections, we looked at, for instance, who were currently serving in second grade, the number going to third, looking at growth that the principal is expecting, and then looking at a larger-than-average kindergarten classroom.
Okay, and how much of that is just studies of demographics that the city's doing or we're cooperating with and understanding?
So a lot of those numbers are coming directly from the conversations we're having with the principals about what they're seeing in their building, what their registration is looking like, and what their knowledge of their community is of the homes going up around them and looking at that information.
Yeah, there's a difference between 9,500 and where we are now. It's a new school.
Yeah, it is.
Scary, scary to say that. I know we're not saying that, but...
Sure. Yeah, it's a significant number of students in 9,500. Mr. Richardson, I'm going to turn to you. I think is what we were projecting last year, is that correct?
Yeah.
So this number of 9,500, we talked about, gets us back to what we had anticipated having this year.
We look at building permits and homeschool students are coming back.
Would some of the difference here be the number of sixth graders that will be leaving compared to the number of kindergartners that will be coming in? I'm assuming it'll be much more in kindergarten entering than it will be in the sixth grade leaving. I don't remember how many total sixth grader students we have, but I'm sure it's not near what number of kindergartners coming in.
We're expecting larger kindergarten class this year, this coming year. A lot of parents kept it short at home this year.
And on that first page of the PTR, you can see down the bottom in the blue, the sixth graders, this year 627 that we currently have. So we anticipate a much larger number of kindergartners. This year, we have 1,300 kindergartners, and we expect that to be more because we know that some of them didn't show up this year because of COVID. And so parents will be wanting to get them enrolled for this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before I move on to truancy? Let me move on then. The truancy numbers for this period, this is the seventh period, we show 427 students, and I did have a question about that. And so I wanted to just real quickly tell you, that number reflects those students who have missed 10 or more unexcused days. That doesn't mean that all those students and their parents will be showing up in juvenile court. What that means is that we have that many families that we're working with to make sure that we're following the state guidelines as far as working with a multi-tiered system of support for truancy. So those parents might very well, the student may not see any more absences for the remainder of the year. But so, as long as they're abiding by those things, and parents are making efforts to make sure that their students are in school, that whole group will not, of course, then be going to court. And then, the last page is our chronic absenteeism, and I'm really proud of these numbers. These numbers sort of really do come out to be what we had sort of predicted from the beginning. That number continues to decline as fewer and fewer students are missing 10% or more. So for every attendance period, we add two days because the attendance period is 20 days. And as we look at the number of students who have missed 14 days for that seventh period, that number's been reduced to 626. And I do want you to remember, that includes excused absences and unexcused absences. So that number has steadily declined throughout the course of the year. I would imagine it's going to stay pretty close to that number because this matches where we were last year or in previous years. So that number, I would imagine, will stay pretty close to the same. And that's the report.
Any questions on the report? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We don't need a motion to approve that report, do we?
No, sir. We do not.
All right. Enrollment revenue and expenditure for March.
Hello.
Welcome back.
Thank you. It's good to be back.
Before you tonight, you have a financial highlights, both revenue and expenditure as of the end of March 2021. Several revenues are highlighted for your consideration and expenditures. A couple of things I would like to point out to you on that financial highlights page is that we are still hoping with the BEP funds that we will, we're not done yet, is what I'm saying, is we hope that we'll still have some additional BEP funds once the state reconsider's and some legislation that's coming through. And under the expenditures, there are several things here, reductions and increases. The big thing is the capital outlay. If you're comparing one year to the next, and if you flip over, the second page is a comparison of income to expenditure, but on the third page, you've got a year-to-date revenue comparison. And one thing I like to suggest in order to make so many pages of information, so many numbers, just narrow it down and let's look at what we really need to look at. And we get lots of...
And we get lost in the numbers. So if we look at, in the, about the middle of the page, 2019-2020 percentage.
Where are you?
I'm on the year-to-date revenue comparison. It's the third page of the financial highlights. And about in the middle of the page, there's a column that's headed percentage, 2019-2020. And you'll see some percentages starting with 94.9% for the current property tax. And this was what was received in March of 2020. And then we're going to move all the way over to the far right-hand side of the page under the column 2020 through 21, the percentage. And what I like to do is, just as an indicator of where we are, compare the percentages from last year at this time to the percentage of money received at this time period. And if there are any big swings, then let's look at that and look if there's a trend. Maybe it's timing. Maybe like at the very bottom of that page, the operating transfers, that was a one-time transfer from the city of Murfreesboro, that $1.3 million. And that was for teacher and student Chromebooks. And it was one time, so we're not going to see that every year. And on the next page, same methodology, same thinking. It's the year-to-date expenditure comparison, looking at those line items, summarizing a lot of information, paring it down to percentages and comparing those percentages and asking the reasonable question, what makes up that difference? And those are the explanations on the highlight page.
Ms. Semb?
Thank you. I still have to have this chewed up just a little bit for me. So the 94.9% is the percentage of the total budget? Is that it? Is that what that means?
Okay, we're on the...
On the, on that first page, 2019 to 2020, you were talking about line one, current property tax.
Okay.
I see what the budget is, the year-to-date revenue, et cetera, under budget. The 94.9% that represents, I, I see the percent, but what is it a percentage of?
It's the percentage of what we've received today versus what was budgeted. So as of March 31st of 2020, we had actually received 94%.
94% of what we budgeted.
Exactly.
So we just have a little bit more to get.
We do. And it just so happens that on March 31st, when we're looking at this financial information as of March 31st, on April 4th, we get $2.4 million in property taxes. So it really is just, it really is a timing.
It's a little timing, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, ma'am, very much. Personnel report?
All right, you have the personnel report in front of you. If you have any questions, Mr. Ringstaff will be happy to answer those.
I don't have a question, just a comment. Interesting to see how many retired teachers you pulled in to do interims. That is hilarious. I'm excited. There are a lot of good teachers there, but I just, I just noticed, I was looking at the names, I was going, oh, my God. Okay, sorry.
I think it's a great comment. I was at overall yesterday because everyone's testing, so I was walking, making sure how things were going there. And I ran into a retired teacher who had taught for our district for a very long time and spoke just how excited she come, is to come back. So our retired teachers, I am learning, are very committed to Murfreesboro City.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I was going to ask Ralph, when do the no re, no rehire letters go home with, to the...
The non-renewal letters, we usually try to wait until the last week of school to minimize disruption in the school building for, to deliver those.
That has changed down through the years, has it? Did it used to be...
Yes, sir. It used to be March 15th, and then it went to June 15th, March, and then April, and then June. Now it's five days after the last instruction day.
All right, any other questions on personnel report? All right. Director's update.
All right, well, thank you. Just a few updates for the board tonight. First of all, as I mentioned, ten-ready testing does continue this week for our third through sixth grade students. We have had a very successful first few days of testing for both our in-person and remote learners. Our students and staff continue to do just a remarkable job. And I want to say I've been in, I think, four or five schools over the last couple days, just kind of as they've been gearing up for testing. And again, our assistant principals who lead this effort are top-notch, and they do a fantastic job, along with Dr. Osborne in our central office who oversees that. So kudos to them. Once our third through sixth graders complete that, and most of them will be completed by the end of the week, we have a short little break, and then our second grade students begin. So we'll be doing some kind of testing for the next few weeks. Any questions or concerns? The next one is regarding summer school. And we wanted to, and in your packet, you will see the flyer we are planning on sending out to our parents who have registered for summer school regarding the COVID precautions we're going to have in place. So CDC guidelines and information that we've gathered from the last few months have really helped inform this plan. And we're using summer school as basically a natural break to kind of evaluate and revise our COVID protocols using this information. So you'll find those COVID guidelines in your packet. During summer school, excuse me, during summer school, masks will continue to be worn inside when six feet of distance cannot be safely maintained. Masks will be optional during outdoor activities. And we will continue to implement our current and optional, I'm sorry, our current quarantine and bus protocols. Nurses are going to be available at all summer school locations, and we're excited to say because of smaller class sizes, that's going to help our social distancing as well. We are going to be eliminating the daily temperature checks that we're currently doing. This practice is not one that has proven a valuable resource in either identifying or mitigating the spread of the virus. Are there any questions regarding that document?
When we say mask optional for outdoor activities, is that up to the individual school, teacher, student?
So that would be at the students, the student deciding if they want to keep their mask on when they're outside playing on the playground.
All right, any, any questions for Dr. Duke on his report? All right, anything else, sir?
The last one, I just want to say one more thank you. I don't know if you've had a chance to see, but Ms. Trail and Ms. Carr in our communications office have been working with Mr. Paget here at City TV to produce a new TV show all about Murfreesboro City called Take 20. If you haven't had a chance to see it, I'm going to tell you, you're missing something great. And they have done a phenomenal job, Ms. Trail, Ms. Carr, and Mr. Paget in putting this together. So it's going to air every month. There'll be a new episode every month highlighting the great work we're doing here in Murfreesboro City. So our first episode, we were at scales, and we really focused on scales. I think the new episode airs in a couple weeks. They're finishing up filming now, is going to spotlight Irma Siegel, John Pittard, and some events at Salem. So we're really excited about that. So congratulations to that team for some great work. And again, if you haven't seen it, go to the city web, YouTube page. It's, it's fun stuff.
It's great. I learned a new card game. A math card game.
All kinds of fun things.
All right, thank you, sir, very much. All right, anything else coming for the board tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I want to take this brief moment to say to our new director of schools, as I have been in several budget, what do you call that thing we did? Retreats? Budget funerals? And myself, besides Wes and Butch, I think I've been on here the longest, that was the most informative budget presentation that we had last week. It was excellent. I understood more. I kind of enjoyed it more. The explanations were great. And I just want to say hats off to you. And you don't already have to tell me. I already know. I know the standard answer is, well, I have a whole team. Thank you, team. Let me thank them. Everybody pulled together. It was wonderful. And I know it doesn't just happen. It takes a lot of work. And for that first budget meeting right out of the gate, excellent, excellent, excellent work. Don't you think so, Lisa?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The team and I both appreciate it.
Had to get that team in, Eric.
Ms. Barton?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the comment with next week being Teacher Appreciation Week. I hope the teachers know how much they're appreciated every year, but particularly this year. It's been a very challenging year, and I think our teachers have come out truly on top and, and working so hard, changing all the time. Caitlin knows what I'm talking about. I mean, good Lord. So thank you, teachers. We appreciate you all the time. But just wanted to say a special thank you because of Teacher Appreciation Week and the fact that you all have really excelled this year.
I will agree, and I think everybody else will agree. It has been a phenomenal year. Been some setbacks, but there's also been a lot of accomplishments. And I think that is certainly a tribute, Roseanne, as you say, to our teachers and our staffs and our buildings. All right, anything, anything you need to mention about masks or whatever?
No, I will say, the only thing I would add is, if you've seen the news today, and we'll have some information going out to our principals tomorrow as well, that the governor did sign the executive order today, which released the county officials from doing mask mandates. But we are understanding that the local authority to manage the public schools continues to fall under the board's jurisdiction. So our plan is to continue to require masks until summer school, and then at summer school, our new procedures will take over as far as what we've just talked about. And then we will use that summertime to evaluate where we go in the fall.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate you making that comment. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All in favor? Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.